Good evening. I want to call the November 28, 2012, meeting of the Rutherford County School Board, Road Board, Zone Study Committee together, please. Becky, would you call the Road?
Mr. Bratcher?
Here.
Mr. Dempsey?
Here.
Mr. Estes?
Here.
Mr. Holliday?
Here.
Ms. Nell?
Here.
Mr. Lamb?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
President. Sorry, Ed.
Sorry, Ed.
Mr. Stubblefield?
Here.
Jeff Phillips?
We're all here. I'd like to kind of take just a minute and welcome Jim Estes to the board. He is, I think this is his first meeting. He had a little bit of a physical ailment last meeting, and we're glad to have you, Jim. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
There's two or three parts of this tonight that you were on the agenda to lead a discussion on, so we'll get into that pretty quick.
Okay. That'll be fine. It may not be about zone lines, but we can discuss something.
Thank you for being here. If you guys will remember, we're trying to wrap this up. We were going to make a presentation, an update, before the County Commission this month. In November, the County Commission asked that we put it off until December because of a public hearing that was going on that was expected to take quite some time this past month. So they asked if we could put it off till December, and we were happy to do that, of course. But now we're getting ready to make, give them an update, and I think that's scheduled for the 13th of December. We've zeroed in on what we have commonly referred to as the map number four, or scenario number four. And Becky's just flashing the note up here that I forgot to do the minutes, and I apologize for that, so let's just back up here. And we need to read and approve the minutes from our last meeting, and I'll call on Vice Chair Ed Phillips to do that, please.
I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
We have a motion to approve those minutes. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, Becky. This won't be the last time she'll run things astray from the chosen path. Anyway, we're zeroing in, and we've repeated this statement at most every meeting that we have. Our charge is to kind of come up with an alternative map for zones for the Road Board and the School Board, alternative to the current one. It doesn't mean that we necessarily support it personally, or necessarily like it personally, but our charge is to come up with a proposal and present it to the County Commission. And that's what we've worked diligently the last few months at trying to accomplish. We had two different scenarios that looked pretty good. One we called map number two, the other one we called map number four, and we've kind of zeroed in, if you guys will remember, on map number four. What you have in front of you are two different maps, one for the School Board, one for the Road Board. And the reason we have those separate is because I kept getting confused when we put them both on one map, so we just decided to put them on two different maps so we could kind of take them just one at a time, one step at a time. So we'll discuss this scenario number four tonight, and also discuss how it affects the current School Board and the current Road Board. And then I've asked Aaron and Ed, mostly Aaron, seems to have a handle on the election cycle process, and to kind of give us a bird's eye view of what might happen if this, if the new map were adopted by the County Commission. How would the election cycles be sequenced and synchronized over the next few years? So that's what we'll do tonight. Start off, let's just look at the School Board first, if we could. And you can see that up there on the left is the current School Board. And all of those little, are they blue numbers, Becky? The little ones?
Yes.
One of the reasons that I struggle with that is because I'm colorblind, you guys. But anyway, the little numbers are attached to those zones and define where the board member lives. You can also see that, once again, kind of getting back to why we're here, you can see it's kind of mumbo jumboed a little bit, especially on the northern end of the county. We have an island, and we wanted to, our goal is to see if we can make it a little bit more plausible, and bring communities together, and different centers together, and hopefully be able to make it a little bit more common than it is now. County Commission districts will not be affected at all, and of course, they won't be, and they're not. But to do this, one of the problems that the original redistricting committee came up with was, they were charged with the incumbency, an incumbency issue, and we're not, so we're not bound by that. That doesn't mean that we'll support it, you guys, I'm saying that again, but it does mean that we're not bound by that. We wanted to look at a map that looked better and made more sense. Scenario number four looks like it has the least effect on the Road Board and the School Board both. And let me just start with zone one. If you can look up there on the new one, zone one. Aaron Holliday is the current School Board member there, and Aaron would also be the new School Board member there, and the only one in that district. And I think the election cycle for Aaron would be in the year 2014, 2014. Zone number two is the Booger Bear. You've got three commissioners, three board members, School Board members, that would be assigned to that district. Koi Young, newly elected, and the election cycle would be in August of 2016. Koi currently represents zone two. Helen Blankenship, she would also be in that new district, and her election cycle is August of 2016, and she currently represents zone three on the old map. David Nipper would also be in zone two, and his election cycle is also August of 2016, and he currently represents zone six under the current map. So you've got three, in essence, incumbents in zone two. Zone three, no incumbents, none. Zone four would be Wayne Blair, and he currently represents zone four, and he's the only one in that district, and the election cycle, I believe, is August of 2014. Zone five, Terry Hodge, and Terry's election cycle is August of 2016, and he currently represents zone five. Zone six, there would be no incumbents, it would be an open district. And zone seven is Tim Hackett. His election cycle is August of 2014, and he currently represents zone seven under the current map. So you've got zone one that would really not affect anyone, per se. Zone four, zone five, and zone seven, so zone one, four, five, and seven would not be affected. Zone two, three, and six would be. Three incumbents would be in zone two, and they're also coming out of zone three and six, which would have no incumbents in. It really doesn't look all that bad, except for zone two.
When would the, when would the election for six and three, being that it'll have nobody, and I know the ones that are now would represent them until then, would that be in 2014?
That's what we're going to talk about a little bit later on, okay? Let's get the maps out of the way, and then Aaron's got some information that, what possibly could happen during the next two or three election cycles, okay? That is something that we will all be very interested in. Any questions on that? It's fairly clean. Once again, we knew that there would be some issues, and that issue just happens to be that two of the School Board members in zone two are newly elected, and one has been there for a little while. I think David Nipper was just reelected, right?
No, he's, all three are brand new.
All three are brand new?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Road Boards, look at the Road Board real quick, and go through the same thing. You can see on the left, that map is identical to the School Board map, and once again, the, I guess they're red, aren't they?
They're red.
The red circles, thank you, represent the current Road Board members, and where they reside in that map. Looking at the new proposed map, zone one is David Victory, lovingly known as Rabbit to most everybody. His election cycle is 2014, and he currently represents zone one, and he would be the only Road Board member in that zone currently, or in the new one. Zone two is Keith Bratcher. His election cycle is 2014. He currently represents zone two, and he would be the only incumbent in that. Zone three is Randall Jones. His election cycle is August of 2016, and he currently represents zone three, and he would be the only incumbent in that. Zone four, there would be no incumbents. Zone five, Michael Anderson, election cycle of 2016. He currently represents zone five. And Paul Johnson, election cycle of 2016, and he currently represents zone six. So there would be two incumbents in zone five. Zone six, Richard Stegall. His election cycle is August of 2014, and he currently represents zone four, but he would be the only incumbent in the new zone six. Zone seven is John Goad. His election cycle is 2016, and he's the only incumbent in that zone, and he currently represents zone seven. So the changes to that board would be, zone four would have no representation, no incumbent. Zone five, Michael Anderson is currently representing that zone, and Paul Johnson would also reside in that zone. And then in number seven, I'm sorry, number six, Richard Stegall would move from zone four to zone six, and would be the only incumbent in that zone. So once again, this doesn't look too bad either. You want to put two incumbents in one zone, and that would be zone five, currently represented by Michael Anderson, and Paul Johnson's dwelling would be in that new zone.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I think I misinformed you on the location of Michael Anderson.
Okay.
If you look at your current Road Board zones over here?
Yep.
He's actually in the 20th, 21st, excuse me, 18th district, which is here, and that would put him in zone three.
Zone three.
So zone five would actually become, well, zone, Paul Johnson would actually start representing what would be the new zone five. And we could name that zone six, that would be a problem, and just maybe five over here is just an nomenclature issue. And then three would have two incumbents.
Randall Jones.
Randall Jones and Michael Anderson.
Okay, start all over. Zone one is okay?
Zone one's good.
Zone two is okay?
Zone two is good.
And zone three would be?
Zone three would be three and...
Would be Randall Jones?
Randall Jones and Michael Anderson. This actually is on the, this side of that line over here, it's over here.
Okay.
That's my mistake, so you asked me to clarify that earlier, and I missed that.
Okay, thank you. Zone four?
There is none.
And zone five, we're taking, Michael Anderson wouldn't be there, but who would be?
That would be Paul Johnson.
And Paul currently represents zone six?
That's correct. We can swap those numbers around. These numbers are interchangeable.
I'd rather leave them the same.
Okay, that's fine.
The School Board and the Road Board.
Yeah.
However they're numbered, I'd rather leave them the same. So Paul Johnson would be the incumbent in zone five, and he would be alone, right?
Yes, sir. Paul Johnson would then represent zone five.
Okay. And in zone six, would still be Richard Stegall?
Yes, sir. He would be, but currently represents zone four.
Currently representing zone four. Okay. So you guys got that? Instead of Michael Johnson being in the new zone five, he would be in the new zone
So with these two proposals, I know we're not considered, but I'm just saying, if I'm looking at it, the only incumbency barrier, or whatever, effect is on the School Board is zone two, and on the Road Board is zone three.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's kind of what we'll present to the County Commission next month, and kind of go through that scenario just like that. And now, we'll kind of get into the election cycle process, and I know Aaron has done some work on that, and I really appreciate him kind of taking the lead on this, because the more I looked at it, the more confused I got. But he seems to have a handle on it. I also believe that County Commissioner Stevens, Robert Stevens, back there, kind of has a handle on it, too. So Aaron, why don't you take off and show us what you've got?
Well, how we implement this, or recommend implementation, I looked for some reasoning behind it. Senator Tracy shared with me, when I got elected to the School Board, that he felt it was the, one of the best beginnings for a public servant, because it's the one elected office that the state requires that there be continuing education. And School Board members are required every year to go and receive training, and the state funds that. And as a consequence of that, the Tennessee School Board Association keeps a lot of data. Currently, nearly 20% of elected School Board officials are serving somewhere between their 11th and 20th year of service. And there's another 8% that are serving over 20 years. So a long tenure in School Board is reasonable, and it's appropriate. It's something that we enjoy in Rutherford County here. We have a higher-than-average length of tenure on the School Board, and I think it reflects in the quality school system that we've got. There are a lot of acronyms, there are a lot of specific funding challenges that you just don't appreciate until you get into the sausage-making of the School Board. And as such, I've gone back and looked at the past, I believe it was the past 24 years of School Board members. Several of them, most of them, served an eight-year term, several have served more than eight years. I think that it is reasonable for us to consider an eight-year possibility for those who were most recently elected. That puts them in office in 2012, an election cycle in 2016, and a reelection in 2020. Or reelection in 2016, and in eight years in 2020. I think because of that length of service, that it would be reasonable for us to target 2020. At that point, we're right up against the redistricting, or the redistribution of the census of 2020, and what would be ineffective 2022. Challenge there is that if we go there, then the impact of the map really shows us, if you made check marks next to the ones that are impacted, they're all on that 2016 or 2020 election cycle. I really came into the process of analysis here, expecting to recommend 2022 as it would coincide with the redistricting that the County Commission would do. I really feel like 2020 may be more appropriate. And I say that just because of the average tenure of a School Board member, eight years, over and over. We see that in Rutherford County, and if there were one out of that group who, you know, continued on, you know, to a 12th year or something like that, I think that would be reasonable. The county is well-served right now. The people who have been elected have been elected by the areas that, you know, the map represents today, and those constituencies certainly know and understand those people. The length of tenure, why would that matter, and how is it impacting? Currently, we have a board chairman who is a level-five School Board member, the highest level of training that we can have, and it only comes through years of service. Terry Hodge is now entering into his third term as a School Board member, and I think it's to the county's credit, to their benefit, to have someone with that length of tenure. For that reason, that's a reason to think about a 2020 implementation as opposed to 2016. Wayne Blair, in his second term, he'll complete eight years in 2014. He is for the Mid Cumberland District, the Tennessee Legislative Network representative. The School Boards throughout Middle Tennessee will sponsor Wayne to go to Washington to represent the interest of Middle Tennessee in lobbying for educational legislation and reform, and those kind of things. Of course, when he goes there, he most appropriately represents Rutherford County first. And, you know, those kind of things come with that length of service and that tenure. For those reasons, I really think, after the analysis that I've done, I would suggest to the committee that 2020 is an appropriate implementation, and ask for that consideration.
So 2020 would mean that we would currently use the same map for the next eight years?
Correct.
Okay. So the next election cycle, which would be 2016, right? The next election cycle, we would use, we would currently use an old map?
Correct.
Okay. So...
Well, we would use it both for 2014, which would be the very next election cycle, and for 2016. The impact would be that those elected in 2012 would have the opportunity to be reelected in those standing districts, the current zones that are shown on the left side of the maps here, in 2016. The real change, where we would have three School Board members and two Road Board members potentially meeting, would be after potentially eight years of service, you know, traditionally and historically appropriate tenure for their offices, and, you know, well notified that that was coming in 2020.
If this committee chose to recommend the target of 2016 versus 2020, the same thing could be implemented using the election cycle in 2014 and 2016, is that right?
It could. We're not seeing any impact in 2014.
Right.
What would be, what would, what would impact if we, it would really be confusing to implement in 2014, because the only place where it's being affected is 2016. If we, if we, if we were to implement this in 2016, or 2014, then we would have people who were in office not representing areas that the map showed that they were representing.
So really, based on that, the only people that would be affected in the Road or School Board would be two, three, five, and six. Because theoretically, I mean, 2022, they're going to have a new map anyways, more than likely, because of the census.
Correct. Yeah, and if we, if we put it in in 2014, or if we put it in in 2018, either of those election cycles, 14 or 18, then it really confuses the map, because you would end up with a district in the School Board, for instance, District Three there, or Zone Three, that would have really no representation.
That same scenario would hold true with the Road Board?
With the Road Board, it would be Zone Four.
Right. But the same scenario would hold true?
Correct.
Looks like the incumbents are also in a 2016 election cycle for the Road Board?
Right. It's the 1620 cycle that would be most appropriate.
Okay. If you understand it well enough to explain it to us, you might be called on to explain it before the County Commission, but I understand you might have a conflict with that. So just run through, the next election cycle would be 2014.
Yes, sir.
What will happen in 2014?
We would have no impact. You know, were we to implement in 2014, none of the incumbents would be affected by the adoption of map scenario four. Were we to implement, were we to not implement in 2014, there still wouldn't be any impact. Really, implementation of this really does not affect 2014.
Okay.
It would affect who you're, who you're representing, you know, where the, where the areas are that your voting, voting is coming from. It would not affect incumbents.
Okay.
And might I add, the scenario four, it makes so much sense. And again, I have alluded to this in previous meetings, there is a private act that designates what these Road and School Board districts are, and it reads that the Road District shall be comprised of Magisterial District 14, 15, and 19. So Road District One is 14, 15, and 19. Road District Two, Two, Three, and Four. And similarly, there's one for the School Board, and it also makes note. One of the things that this absolutely will accomplish, and the good work of this committee is, that the numbers on this page can be changed to the County Commission districts that we are collecting together. As the County Commission districts since 1951 have changed and been redistricted, and they've moved, we will compact them back together. One of our charges is compactness. We'll also reset them for the communities of interest, allowing for municipalities around the county to be represented, you know, at least in a majority manner, and all of those things can be accomplished. And we'll do it in the, in the most effective way possible. I was looking back, there were some adjustments made last spring with regard to the Road Board, and it affected some length of service, some times there, and if those adjustments were made, to clean up this private act, so that what is actually being done in the county... so that what is actually being done in the county is reflected in this private act. And likewise, that's what we can do here as well.
So, the election cycle of two thousand eighteen would look like what?
Election cycle of two thousand eighteen would be the same as two thousand fourteen. No impact on incumbency, but it would leave us with unrepresented areas of the map. They wouldn't technically be unrepresented as the, you know, the election cycle would, you know, it would be, well, I voted for this guy, and then two years later, I voted for another candidate, you know, for, because I got moved to a different zone. And so, we would have areas that would vote on a two-year cycle as opposed to a four-year cycle because they got moved to another area. Wouldn't have any impact on incumbency. It just potentially confuses the electorate as to who their representative is.
But two thousand eighteen, we would be voting for, the people who are up for reelection in two thousand eighteen would be running for the new zone?
If we implemented in two thousand eighteen, I still recommend that implementation should be two thousand twenty. If we implemented in two thousand sixteen, then yeah, two thousand eighteen would be new districts. But whatever we do on a two thousand fourteen or eighteen has no impact on incumbency. What we do in two thousand sixteen and twenty absolutely impacts incumbency.
Right. My question is, when would the new map, if it were adopted by the county commission, when would the new map be voted on? When would citizens be voting for the new zones?
Whatever the implementation date is.
That's right. You're saying two thousand twenty would be fully implemented, right?
Correct.
But wouldn't the new map have to be voted on at least some in two thousand eighteen?
No, sir. Because those that are affected in the two thousand eighteen election cycle are unaffected by the map.
Okay.
So, those road and school board who are running in the two thousand fourteen or two thousand eighteen, without regard of when the map changes, they continue to run with a slightly altered electoral base, but without impact.
And the exact same thing would happen with the road board?
Yes, sir.
The exact same thing, okay. Everybody kind of understand that?
Yes, sir. It appears to me that we're making an assumption eight years out that nobody's gonna move that's on the school board to another area of the county. Nobody's gonna decide that they've had enough of the public hearings and are not gonna run. So, I mean, we're making, to keep pushing it out eight years from now, if we're here to try to solve a problem that, you know, apparently exists enough that we've had a committee to meet about it, I'm not sure that, you know, two thousand fourteen, two thousand sixteen is any worse. But I just think we're making an assumption that all the incumbents are gonna stay incumbents until two thousand twenty and live in the same place. And I'm not, I'm not sure I can make that leap.
Okay. What we're talking about is two thousand twenty. Robert, I think you've got a, if you guys will allow me to do this, since I'm chair, I guess I can. Robert, why don't you come up and kind of present your thoughts? I know you've put a lot of thought into this process as well.
Well, thank you all for doing this job. I know it's very exciting and I'm sure everybody learned a lot of stuff about the county maps from this. I agree with pretty much everything that Aaron said, except I think we need to put it into effect in two thousand eighteen, and there's several reasons for that. First, one of the reasons that this was brought up was, just look at the map. We wanna get a better map when we go into redrawing the districts in two thousand twenty after the census, so we have something better to start with. If you look at this one and look at where the members live on the current zones, there's, most of them are right on the border. And we drew these based on where those incumbents lived at that time. And if we wait and do this again in two thousand twenty and draw the boards based on where everybody lives again, imagine what it's gonna look like then. This map, I've looked at the prior ones, and they just keep getting more contorted. So, that's kind of the purpose. We're trying to get a reasonable map to start with next time, planning for the future. But if we wait and do it in two thousand eighteen, that lets every office holder now run again one more time for reelection. Ideally, I think the people that really brought this up want it effective in the next election cycle. But then, there is that concern that the commissioners decided to use incumbency as a main thing, and it wasn't fair that the commissioners get to run for reelection from the school board and road board members have to face each other. And that's a very legitimate concern. Some of us on the commission did not vote for that map for that reason, that incumbency was so prioritized. But if we wait and do it in two thousand eighteen, every school board and road board member can run again for reelection. And in two thousand sixteen, the people who are running in that election cycle, if we've already put this new map into effect, they will know going into that election what their district's going to look like. Does that make sense? If you're running for office in two thousand sixteen and you know ahead of time that the districts are gonna look like this next time, you have to live in this district if you're going to run. And if they can, and they can move if they had to. But like Mr. Stubblefield said, to assume that all these people will be reelected or that they're going to run again or that they won't move to another residence or that something tragic might happen to them, and there's no telling what might happen between now and then. But from the people I've talked to, the fairest way, the best compromise, was to put it into effect in two thousand eighteen. That way, we can get people that are in communities of interest together. We can solve Laverne's issues. It solves the Eagleville issues. It makes a map that actually complies with the standards that we've outlined. If you just look at the two, obviously, the one on the right is more compact. It has contiguous districts. It puts the communities of interest together. We can use this when we start drawing the districts after the next census and come out with a much more logical product. But I don't see any reason to wait till two thousand twenty because they're just gonna redraw them again in two thousand twenty-one after the census comes out. And it's almost like, why bother if we're gonna wait and do it then?
I agree. Sometime, you gotta put a map out in front of the people and say, okay, this is what it's gonna be. Because if we wait till that next election cycle and try to do it, then we've got the same argument about, you know, incumbency and according to there and there is tenure. You know, if everybody wants to serve eight years on the school board, sometime, it is fluid. But I think at some time, you've got to start planning to go towards that. And that sounds like a good compromise is if it is, you know, two thousand eighteen, at least it gives everyone, you know, a heads up and plenty of time to plan for it.
So, two thousand sixteen, which is four years from now, all the people that ran, the new people who were just installed would have an opportunity to run for reelection. And then, two thousand eighteen, the new map would be in place?
And those that run in two years are the ones, the first ones affected?
The ones that ran that are in midterm, how would it affect them?
Well, now, that's where it gets sticky because when the districts change, if you're not living in your district, there's case law out there, at least with the commissioners, that if you fail to reside within the borders of your district, sure, let's represent that you lose your position.
Right.
And I know for the commissioners, it's a felony to not reside within the district you're living in. So, I don't know if there's case law in school board and road board members or not. But that's why if it's, if they know it's gonna be in effect in two thousand eighteen, they can look at it and decide, I live in the district, I can run again in two thousand sixteen. Or they can run in two thousand sixteen and then move, you know, across town or whatever to fit into that district. But they'll have plenty of notice and plenty of time to plan.
Really, looking at the school board, the only effect would be in Zones Two, Three, and Six. No matter when you did it, right?
That's correct. And if you do it in two thousand eighteen, then you have created a situation where one of those three individuals can continue, and two of them have got to resign or face felony charges. Is that what we're understanding?
They don't have to run.
Run.
They can run. If these three have to run against each other in two thousand sixteen, I mean, I'm sorry, if they have to run against each other...
Now, if you're implementing in two thousand eighteen, they come up for reelection in two thousand sixteen. They all run for reelection and are reelected in the zones that are in place in two thousand sixteen. Then, in two thousand eighteen, according to what Mr. Stevens has expressed here, they would face, one of the three, or two of the three have to resign or face criminal charges.
I don't know whether they have to face criminal charges.
Yeah, I don't know about that for the school board, bro. I don't know how that works.
We've got our election administrator that's had a pretty busy month. Comments? Come on up.
Well, I have no moment, so I'm not sure if you really...
Don't come up.
I was just gonna say that this happens on the state level all the time with when they have, you know, redistricting come up. And the way it's been explained to me is that there's overlap. So, when the new map goes into place, the representatives still continue to represent the constituents who elected them until their term expires. And then, they have a choice. You know, they either sit it out two years and run again or they can run early. See what I'm saying? So, they still, that way, you don't have any areas that are unrepresented or overrepresented. And you might have some overlap, but you're not gonna have overlap, if that makes any sense, unrepresented areas.
So, they would still serve out a term?
And I don't know that that's the correct answer, but I know that that's how it's been explained to me, how it works on the state level.
Okay.
So, that would fall under the language that says that the redistricting or rezoning effort cannot truncate a term?
An election term.
Well, you're talking about cutting short, you know, someone's term. As far as, that's in the private, that's in the private act that you're talking about, is that what you're referring to?
I am.
Right. I don't know that the private act really has anything to do with how that works, but that's how it's been explained to me, that how it works on the state level. So, I would presume that it would work that way on the local level as well.
Just, let's just say that...
See, you have that issue anytime you have staggered terms.
Right.
So, with the county commissioners, you all won't be affected because you all went in all twenty-one run in the same year. But any boards or commissions that are staggered, you have some who are elected prior to redistricting taking effect who have a term that's gonna extend beyond redistricting taking effect, and then others who are elected under the new map. So, that's where the problem comes in, is where you have staggered terms, where you have half the people getting elected on one cycle and the other half on the next cycle. But the way it's been explained to me is that on the state level, when you have that issue where you have a four-year term and the middle of that term falls within the year that redistricting takes effect, such as this year, so anyone who was elected in two thousand ten who's gonna serve until two thousand fourteen doesn't have to resign their post. They continue to represent the individuals who elected them under that old district. That's why we had a lot of issues. We had a lot of phone calls after redistricting maps went up near Rutherford County. And when we sent out voter registration cards, we had a lot of people confused because they were visiting the Tennessee General Assembly's website, and there's a little searchable area on there that says, "Find your legislator." And you can go in and type your home address, and it'll pull up who all your legislators are, where the House and Senate. So, it was telling them, on the one hand, that they were in the, you know, fourteenth or whatever, but their voter registration cards are the sixteenth or thirteenth or... And they were saying, well, I got my new voter registration card and it's wrong because the website says X. And I'm freaking out thinking that our website's wrong, and I'm trying to find out what website they went to and why would it... Because they said they went to the state website. Well, the state of Tennessee election website should have the same information as our office because they get that information from us. So, then I'm trying to figure out where in the world they got this information. Then I figure out, oh, they're looking at the Tennessee General Assembly's website because it does show who their legislator is, being someone different who was elected two years ago. That's where the difference comes in, and that makes perfect sense.
That type of overlap and confusion is what I'm referring to, does not take place when we implement in sixteen or twenty.
Let's just say, if we did implement it in eighteen, or tried to implement it in eighteen, then what would happen to the people who are, let's just say, Mr. Young, Ms. Blankenship, and Mr. Nipper were reelected in...
Sixteen.
In, yeah, in sixteen. They would continue to represent for two more years. So, Ms. Blankenship would continue to represent Zone Three, which would be open. And Mr. Nipper would continue to represent Zone Six, which would still be open. Is that correct?
If that's what you're saying, I didn't follow exactly what you're saying. But it's the same effect regardless of what you implement it.
Right, right.
I think he...
I don't see the difference in sixteen and twenty, though, other than giving them four more years to be on the school board.
Right.
So, if that person, if that person gets beat, say, Ms. Blankenship, if she were to get beat, then in nineteen, in two thousand twenty, you say, well, that person ain't serving four more years, you're back to where he's at again. If she, you know, one... So, I mean, I mean, I, look like to me, sixteen or twenty is better than fourteen or eighteen. Look like to me.
Sixteen or twenty is...
I don't understand the difference. What is the priority of sixteen, eighteen over sixteen?
Just letting everybody run one more time in their current district.
But if they can run, if they're gonna run one more time, but yet it ain't gonna be a four-year term?
Hey, I think sixteen, I would favor sixteen personally, if seven, but...
I would also.
Well, I mean, you know, you take evil, if they go along this map and there were six we are, because I know Wayne Blair's gonna represent us till then, but then that would give us, that'd give us two years that we would have our school board in here instead of waiting till eighteen or twenty.
Yes.
I mean, I favor sixteen or twenty over fourteen or eighteen. Look like it'd be less confusing.
It's more like having a lame duck there extended, yes.
Well, when we do this, whatever we do, or if we do anything on this right here, the road board and school board is affected, just like she said, because they've run staggered terms. With the county commission, it never affected them when they changed theirs because they all run at the same day.
Right, right.
So...
We knew this was gonna be the issue. That's the reason we're having so much discussion.
Well, I mean, you know, and I, you know, I know the thing kept coming up about incumbency, but, I mean, you can say, you know, we can't look at incumbency, but it affects incumbency because we're, because the road board and school board are staggered terms and the county commission, I mean, they considered incumbency, but not so much because they all run at the same time anyway. So, they knew when they changed that thing, they all knew, hey, we're all up for election anyway, so you know what you're facing, so...
And even if a candidate were to unseat one of the three school board members that are in the two thousand sixteen cycle, with this map in place openly known that it is going into effect in two thousand twenty, it is very likely that it would affect those who would run. You know, so, you know, it is, you know, it is worthwhile to have the two thousand twenty map and the implementation even if somebody gets defeated, if an incumbent were defeated in two thousand sixteen. It's not guaranteeing anybody a seat. It just says that historically, what has been effective? Historically, it is, you know, across the entire state, eight-year tenure in school board is an effective time to become familiar with the process and be an effective elected representative there. And yet, after eight years, we see a lot of people move on from that particular office. However, there are some that serve even beyond that in Rutherford County. We have a higher-than-average length of service with our board chairman now going into his third term on school board. And is that effective? Is that helpful to our community to have that kind of continuity and stability on the school board and the vision that it represents? I think it's one of the reasons we have...
If you're not representing geographically the area adequately, like Wayne has, you know, he's clean across the county right now. I mean, that's not fair representation either, you know? You're weighing the tenure against the, I guess, the geographics of it. You know, is, you know, is it, are we, are we representing now the inner-city kids versus the rural kids with one person? You know, that, that's part of what we're here to have, it to be continuous.
Absolutely, and that is something that we should impact.
Right.
But I think that we should, we should impact it with, with slow, careful care, not, not in.
I think one thing you gotta consider, I, I think it's always been a question of road board, school board, and even the county commission. I think sometimes we get lost in it, you know, we have, we have the city of Marfisboro, Eagleville, Laverne, Smyrna, inside the county, you know, it's just like I, I had mentioned with the road board. I mean, I currently represent parts of Smyrna, parts of Laverne. But from a road board perspective, I, I do nothing for them. I mean, the ci, those, those city entities take care of their own roads and their stuff. So, uh, sometimes I think, you know, we, you know, these boards, they are, they are, when, when he was talking about it's fair representation. Well, I, I mean, I represent that area, but as far as my road board perspective, I do nothing for them. So, I mean, I, I know I live in Last Cassis and I represent Laverne. I mean, I can't help because somebody in Laverne didn't run for the road board. But they seem no reason to, because if they were there, I mean, what are they gonna do? They, their city entity takes care of their roads there, so.
Let's, let's try to get this thing back together. Nicole, you have something?
I, I just have one other consideration. If you take a look at the school board centers, and for instance, look at Zone Two, you've got three incumbents under the proposed Zone Two. That would be Corey Young, currently of Zone Two, Helen Blankenship, currently of Zone Three, and David Nipper, currently of Zone Six. Now, all three of those individuals are up for reelection in 2016.
Right.
So that would put three of them against each other. Only one can win that election. Let's say that all three of them choose to run for that seat because they want to serve our community in that capacity. If anybody but Corey Young wins reelection in that, then let's just say, let's just say Ms. Blankenship wins reelection under the proposed Zone Two, then that's gonna create a vacancy in Zone Three for the remaining two years of her term, under the old Zone Three. That's just an example. Same thing with, you know, if David Nipper won that seat, that would create a vacancy in Zone Six for the remaining two years.
I don't know about you guys, but the more we talk, the more confused I get. So let me try to, let me try to understand this simply, if I can, understand this. If we wanted to do this in 2016, we would implement the new map, and the only people that would be affected on the school board would be Zone Two. Only people that would be negatively affected, the incumbents, would be Zone Two, right? And if we did it in 2020, assuming that everybody was reelected, we'd have the exact.
Same thing, yeah.
So that might be the scenario that we.
You want.
Somebody's up for election.
Any year.
And.
One way or another, there's gonna be a vacancy created if these.
Whatever year we do it.
Running against each other for, for the remaining two years.
Okay, explain me, with that being said, if somebody had a, that's unrepresented during that two-year period, if somebody had a complaint or problem, who'd they go to?
Well, you, the vacancy would have to be filled either by appointment or special election, depending on what the laws are pertaining to that.
I'm sorry, the vacancy is not there.
That's right. You're right.
Ms. Lester? Because, because two, three, and six are not only the candidates who would run against one another, but they also are representing the potential vacancies, and they are all on the same election cycle.
Right.
They would run against one another, and they would no longer represent three or six. And three and six would have open elections. So there would not be a vacancy.
I, I got you there. I'm thinking about where you got, if you got at least one person who's on the other cycle, though.
But it's not. Right, but, but the vacancy potential is not there either on road board or on school.
That's where, that's where you've got somebody who's on the 2014 versus the 2016. And if the 2016 person wants to run in 2014.
Right.
Then if they win, that's creating a vacancy. I guess that's what I was trying to get at.
That would be a problem, but it's not a problem that we face with scenario four.
Right, right. Let's, let's just say that maybe we present the election cycles and the impact of the election cycles with the county commission, and let those guys go with it. We don't make a recommendation to them. Let's just say, these are the impacts. If we went with 2016, clean 2016, no one would be impacted outside of Zone Two. Would have three incumbents in Zone Two and two open seats in Zone Three and Six. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And in 2018, if we implemented it then, someone help me. If we implemented it, tried to implement it in 2018, what would that do?
There would be no impact, but there would be the type of constituent or electorate confusion that Ms. Lester spoke of.
That would have no.
Where they would.
No true representation.
Look for, and they would find conflicting information. They actually would be represented. They absolutely would be represented, but they would be with conflicting information as to who their representative was.
But they're before years to educate the electors, too.
Sure.
Yes.
To let them know what's going on.
I mean, I'm in favor of 2016.
Do we need to make that recommendation? Back to the committee again, or what?
Let's just say 16. I wanna be able to throw it out to the, to the county commission and say, blah, blah, blah. So in 2016, everything looks pretty clean on both boards.
With this scenario?
Sir.
Right, right. Yes, Ed.
I mean, if you look at the Zone Six that would be created, you've got three county commission districts that have three different potential reelection dates. You've got what is Zone Eight for county commission, their road board member is up in 2014. Obviously, they wouldn't be affected by 2016. But with the new law that they put in effect for Road Board Seven, he technically is up for reelection in 2018. So how does that work as far as, as the election cycles? And then, then of course, if you look at the, I think what is Trade Gooches, I guess that's nine or whatever that is, it's 2016. So I mean, those two wouldn't necessarily be affected, but as far as the, the one, actually, the one is Trade Gooches, I'm sorry, would be affected at 2018 right now. See what I'm saying?
Yeah, and you're exactly right.
Man, I threw a monkey wrench in our.
I see where it's coming from, yes.
But I mean, if you, if you draw it out on here, is what, which I, which I did.
Right.
Because based, based on what the old zones are, that's what their reelection.
He's talking about the people that's gonna be reelected in, in 14. 2014, so you're gonna be in the same situation.
Well, no, because with the new law, with John Goad's district, the way it makes up is.
Right.
Number 20.
When they, uh.
I know we don't have the county commission district numbers on there, but 20 is the, the one that runs down 96 and Alamo Road right there. Yeah, there you go. And that technically.
Earlier a few months.
Would have a representative for 2018.
A few months ago, when they had to clean up that language, what you were talking about earlier, they had, they, under the private act, there was one road board zone that was affected, which was John Goad's, which was seven. So actually, they elected to, to, when they passed that, was when he ran this time, he's, he's gonna be in a six-year term this time instead of four, that's correct, right? So he's going from 2012 to 18. Did it affect any school board member? Was it a school board?
No, because the school board is controlled by statute.
Okay.
As far as four-year terms.
Okay.
State statute, we felt like it would be easier to maneuver the term, the li, the actual length of the term under the road board because we, we could not find any comparable statutory authority regulating the road board members.
So when they did the private, it just affected one road board area, which was Mr. Goad?
Well, it affected yours, too.
That's right.
You run, you run 2014, but you serve a six-year term.
That's right.
Of 2020.
That's right. Or that zone, whoever runs for that zone, right?
Or that zone, yeah.
So we could, we could include in this recommendation then to make the.
I think that was probably the reason that you all mentioned 2020 for implementation before, because that was the last.
Yeah, we could put, we could put the election of 2014 for Road Board Zone Four as the same type of six-year term, running on the precedent that we just did for the, for the Zone Seven, and extend it to 2020, and then everything would be in step.
Say it again.
Well, I, the reason, the reason we did that was to, to make it the same between the school board and the road board.
That's correct.
Yeah, we just have to look at that. So that it would be easier for, for the voters when two of them have ballot time.
Yeah, so you don't wanna change four to a 2020 cycle because that gets it off from the.
School board, right. See, when they did that private, that's what, that was the whole purpose of getting the school board and the road board lined up, and that's why we, right.
Oh, we were so close.
And the same size.
Yep.
And I think that's when you all discussed in a previous meeting, why you were kinda thinking of shooting this one in 2020 initially, because that, everything would kinda have played out as far as that's concerned in 2020.
Sorry about that.
Can we define a road board term for two years only?
I think, I believe the committee voted that they would prefer not to shorten the term because it was a lot of time, effort, and expense to campaign for a, more two years, I guess you'd say. And I know we do have other offices in the state that are two-year terms.
Okay, well then, that's the case then for 2018, actually. If we were to put the scenario four in place in 2018, it would allow, uh, Road Board Zone Six to elect their individual, uh, on their cycle in 2018. And it would also allow Richard Stegal as an incumbent, were he to be reelected in 2014, to run for reelection as an incumbent in 2018, if that were his desire. But he would be running not for Zone Four, but for Zone Six. If you look at your map, the potential problem is where we have a red and yellow number, and the yellow zone number, and the two numbers are different. So we see that on the road board map where four and six are together, and where five and six are together. Those are the potential problems. It's not a problem with the five and six because five and six are both on the 2016 election cycle. It is a potential problem between four and six because Zone Six, their election cycle is 2016 and 2020, and road board member, uh, there in, in 2014, he would, he would come up for reelection. So if we implemented it in 2018, then he would have completed his 2014. We wouldn't truncate his, his election cycle. But instead of running then, now he'd have to sit out till 2020, wouldn't he? Would he? He would, wouldn't he?
Any election cycle.
It's gonna have an impact.
Let's just say any election cycle we put in for the, the school board's gonna work. Right? Anything we do for the school board can work. 14, 16, 20, anything we do can work. But the better of the scenarios would be probably 16 or 20.
Because of historical tenure on school board, the better of the school board scenarios is 20.
If you were to take that.
Your opinion, Aaron, okay? That, that, we're, we're talking about incumbency again, guys, and we're getting hung up on that, and our charge is not so much incumbency.
No, our charge is seven criteria that includes incumbency, and we are allowed to wait them as we see fit. The county commission had the same seven criteria. They chose to wait incumbency very, very high. We can wait incumbency with no regard whatsoever, but we have all seven criteria.
Just say one thing, with the, what Nicole said about 2020, I think we, we looked at it. On the private act, I'm speaking from the road board perspective, there was one that was affected this, this election cycle, which put Mr. Goad from 12 to 18. And then Zone Two is gonna be affected in 14, which will take it to 20. And then that's gonna have that cleaned up after 2000, after 2020. So that will no longer be an issue. So I think that's why we originally looked at 2020. And then by 2022, it'll be time for county commission to redraw or to redistrict anyway, so.
Push it out to 2030 then.
We won't be. We won't be.
I mean, I, I suggest somebody make a motion, recommend Map Four for 2016, to take it to the county commission.
County commission.
I'll, I'll make that motion, Chairman.
I'll second you.
Can you give me your motion again?
To recommend scenario number four to be implemented in 2016, and make that recommendation to the county commission.
Yeah, you guys hold on just a second. I'm gonna do a little administrative work here. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to implement in, in 2016, map number four, for the current proposal that we're talking about. The effect on the school board would be, Zone Two would have, looks like Corey Young as an incumbent, Helen Blankenship, and David Nipper would not be incumbents to that zone. And Zone Three and Zone Six would be open, open seats. Is that correct?
Point of order, that is only correct if the implementation date is prior to the election cycle. I'd like to offer an amendment that the motion be effective October 1st, 2016.
Okay, we have an amendment to the motion that would be after the actual 2016 elections. Be a couple of months after the 2016 elections. We have a, an amendment to the motion. I have a second. Motion fails for lack of second. Okay, so 2016. Okay, so 2016, the, the only effect on the school board would be zone three, I'm sorry, zone two, three, and six. And we would have three people up, three people who are finishing their first term. And if all three of them chose to run and they live in their current residence, they would all be running for the same seat, which would be zone two. Zone three and zone six would be open, correct?
Correct.
Now, here's the sticky part that I need to, once again, focus in on. How, Ed, you, you opened that up a minute ago, how would that affect the road board?
That's what I'm trying to, trying to figure out. I mean, like I said, just zone six is where it really, I'm asking the issue necessarily, but I'm, I'm not sure exactly.
All of these, read, all of these election dates that we went over before, like David Victory on 2014 and John Goad in 2016, is not accurate?
Well, not for John Goad because when they just passed this private act, Mr. Chairman, that, to clean that up and to get them aligned with the, with the road board and school board, they had to make two terms, six-year terms. One was Mr. Goad, it took effect this time, he'll go to 18. And then zone two, which I currently represent, in 14 when they run, that'll take that to 2020. Then after 2020, then that's all cleared up. Is that clear? So that's not an issue anymore.
So John Goad is not up for reelection in 16, but in...
Eighteen.
Eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, Nicole?
Oh, yeah, Mr. Goad is in 18.
And the other one was who?
Zone two, which was in 2014, and then that, that, that will go to 2020. That'll have to be a six-year term too, to, now to get that lined up with the school board. And then after 2020, they'll, school board and road board will be lined up and that will be no more an issue. But it is an issue right now.
Zone two was taken to six years as well and then would fall back to four?
It will be, it will be in 2014.
Which is not necessarily, we're not focusing on incumbency at this point. We're just focused on how the election cycles line up.
Aaron made a good point. I've never really tried to spend a lot of time worrying about incumbency because that's what...
Right.
The original redistricting committee couldn't get over was the incumbency issue. And, and the way it was presented to me to serve on this is to come up with a new map and, and incumbency should not get in the way. Incumbency is listed, but it's listed down in the orders, but it is listed, Aaron, you're absolutely right, and I missed that, so I apologize for that. So Keith, what you're saying is zone two, the next election is 14, and that will be for six years.
That's correct. And it'll go to 20. And then after that, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, after the 2020, then that's no longer an issue. Yeah, then everybody's back to four years and the school board and the road board are lined up together, so.
But you still have people in 2020 would still be, have a two-year term?
No.
Or not?
No.
Nor was everybody on the road board had come up for election in 2020?
No, no, but after 2020, the road board and school board would be lined, those zones, those zones will be lined up the same and they would be four-year terms.
They were trying to make where...
It's not a two-year term, it's just what we were talking about with the state, the state representatives and someone who run four-year terms. It just falls in the middle of their four-year terms.
So what happens to the people that run in 2018 for a four-year term in 2020? What are you going to do with them? Be the same thing, right?
If we look at the road board map and we just say zone two, and I'm not going to make it personal, Keith, okay? I'm just going to say zone two. If that's a six-year and, and the next election is, is for six years up till 2020, it still should not affect, if we implemented this in, in 2016, shouldn't have any effect on it. You're, you as an example are the incumbent in there and you'd still be the incumbent in there come the next, next election cycle, so it shouldn't have any effect on it at all?
No.
Okay. And then John Goad and, and he's elected to, to...
Eighteen.
Eighteen, okay. And he's in zone seven, and he's the only incumbent in zone seven. So the effect on that should be, I can't see any effect on it. It, it may have. You guys keep bringing up stuff that making my face red. So, so as far as implementing it in the year 2016, was that the motion? 2016, we're going to have the effect on the road board very similar to what we have on the school board with zones three having two incumbents in it and zone four in essence having, having none, no representation being open. Everybody follow that? The motion is, is for us to recommend 2016. And let me just kind of give a little sidebar to that. I'll try my best to explain it to the county commission that that's what the recommendation was, but there's other alternatives too. And you guys do whatever the heck you, you really want to or need to do. Now, what's going to happen, no matter what we do, is going to be greatly influenced in my mind by the people we're talking about here tonight. They're going to be, my school board member is going to call me with a recommendation. My road board member is going to call me with a recommendation. And, and I'm here to tell you that that's going to influence my decision-making process on the county commission, really is. So what we do here tonight is going to be greatly influenced by these two boards. So I would propose that in addition to taking this to the county commission, that we take it to the school board and the road board vote sometime in the next month or so. And just kind of, just kind of lay it out to them.
Yeah.
Okay? And, and once again, also, if, if everyone likes the map and the county commission says, I don't want 216, I want 218 or 220, they, they have that choice.
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
I, I think that if this committee were to recommend implementation in 2016, we knowingly leave unanswered questions in the, in the, in the road board election cycle. And for that reason, bearing in mind exactly what you've said, Mr. Chairman, that we can, we can expect that the county commission could move this to any date that they would like, that an appropriate thing for this committee to do is to reflect the things that we've discovered and recommend that which does not leave unanswered questions. Set it at 2020 and then allow the county commission, if they so desire, to move it accordingly. For that reason, I don't find myself necessarily in favor of the current motion.
Okay.
Suggestion, just, just trying to get there. Would it be possible to say that the county commission should implement it at the earliest practical date and let them pick what the earliest practical date is?
Any of that stuff would work. Let's just, well, any other, any other comments on the motion? Once again, when, I'm going to present the thing to the county commission, okay? Hopefully, I'm one of them. And, and hopefully, when they start making the, some of the attacks, they're going to be attacking me. And, and I'm a big boy and I can take it. But, but what I don't want to do is, is to get up in front of the county commission and not have good answers. And that's the reason I kept going back to, let me understand this, let me understand this, let me understand this. So if this motion passes on 2016, I can say that it was the recommendation of the committee, not a unanimous recommendation of the committee, and this is what I would expect there. There are still some other considerations, 2018, 2020, and that would even take incumbency that further out if that's what you guys want to do. So I can do all of those types of things, but the, the motion on the floor is for, to recommend implementation at, on 2016. And I think I have the answers as to how it's going to affect those that are in office right now. Any other comments on the motion before we take a vote?
Well, I think it should be implemented at a definite date, whether it's pre-election or post-election because of the potential...
What happened in, in statewide is that it was implemented before the election cycle, so i- is it okay for the motion to say to implement before?
Yeah.
The general, county general election in 2016? Whatever that may be, whether the legal department thinks it's better in January or June at the end of the fiscal year, whatever the case may be.
That was the intent of my motion, not, not after the election cycle.
Okay. Before the election cycle, so did folks, actually, the, really, the election qualifications start in January, right? Qualifications start in January, is that what you guys know?
It's a little early, but I think it's April.
Yeah.
It's, you can pick up qualification papers in January.
No, it, it's so many days before the qualifying deadline for that particular election and so on. So the qualifying deadline, it may fall somewhere in January, it just depends on how it plays out in the calendar.
Been doing this for 20 years, it's January.
Well, I mean, it's not January 1st though.
No.
You just mean sometime in January.
I've picked mine up the first week of January many times. Now, you may have changed all that, okay? You're the boss. But what I'm getting at is that the qualification process really starts the first of the year, so that probably ought to be when the map goes into effect. But we, we can get, we can get legal advice on that.
Yeah, I was going to say, I, I think just having it go into effect at the first, you know, the first of August for that election is fine because you're, you're going to be picking up the qualification papers for what it actually is. We had that scenario this time where we changed a couple, I think it was Mr. Goad's zone number changed, I think he was zone one, and his zone number changed to seven. Even though the group didn't change, the number changed. So really, you know, we issued a qualifying petition based on what it's going to be at the time of the election. So it's really up to you guys. If you, if you make the effective date of the new map too early, then you've got those potential overlap issues again. So that's, again, you can decide that at a later time.
The only, the only thing that you would make it effective for is for the election, not representation.
Right.
Okay?
Right.
That's exactly what's happened with the state representatives in Nashville. Up until the election process, this is the new map and they'll represent until January 1st, right? That's the same thing. But, but people need to know when they begin the qualifying process what, what the zones are. I'll, I'll get legal advice on that, okay? I'll talk to Jim Coates' office and we'll get legal advice on that. But it'll be before the election cycle in 2016.
Because if you made it after, then you're effectively making this map not effective until the 2016 election cycle.
Okay. Everybody understand?
Mr. Bradcher?
No.
Mr. Dempsey?
Yes.
Mr. Estes?
Yes.
Mr. Holliday?
No.
Ms. Nail?
Yes.
Mr. Lamb?
Yes.
Edward Phillips?
I'm abstaining.
Mr. Stubblefield?
Yes.
Commissioner Phillips? Six to two to one.
Motion carries. Okay, so here's what we're going to do. December 13th, I believe it's 13th on a Thursday, I'll make a presentation before the county commission. Aaron, can I get copies of those two statutes that, could I have your copies if you don't mind?
Sure.
So I can take a look at those? Because that needs to be talked about too. And I'll take it, I'll go to the, to the county attorney's office and, and lay out to him what we're going to be doing and hopefully get some input from him to make sure that everything is, in their opinion, legal and we're headed in the right direction. If there are certain private acts that need to be changed and they're probably legal, that needs to be part of the process as well, so I'll do that. And with, also with the understanding that sometime in, in December or the first part of January or into January, we'll also meet with the school boards, the school board and the road board and make the same presentation to those guys too, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if you go to legal and they tell you, like I said, the main reason why I abstained was just, I still wasn't sure on how it would work out with as far as that zone seven, or at least the, the road board. But if legal comes back and says, we can't, you couldn't do this in 2016 anyways, we have time to come together again?
What we'll do is just call another meeting.
Yeah.
I won't take it before the county commission. With a recommendation on implementation, I'll just take it, I'll just take the map to them and say there are issues with the election cycles and we need some legal input on those things. I, I'm not even sure it's part of our job to make these election cycles, but I know it's going to be a question that's on everyone's mind, how is it going to affect folks? And I think that's the reason we've toiled with that over the last few months, I really do. This has been a, an eye-opening experience for me. And I appreciate all the hard work you've done, Aaron. I really appreciate you putting all that information together. Commissioner Stevens, I appreciate you attending these meetings and giving us your input as well. And I guess I will call another meeting, we'll put another meeting back together. It'll probably won't be until sometime late in January, okay, you guys, maybe a couple of months from now. And it'll be on a Wednesday evening, maybe even the last Wednesday in January, but I'll send out an, an agenda and a meeting notice and we'll get back together and see where we are, okay?
January 8th of 2016, as long as there's no changes in the law, would be the first to pick up qualifying paperwork.
If, if we just... I don't know if it would go into effect until the election, but, but...
I think it'd be an excellent idea to have it published, but not actually effective until the day of the election.
Thank you. Is that it? Thank you.